My computer just shut down.
I guess, I guess.
Like is it, it may be the power. Maybe it wasn't fully seated. Thank God you're early so this wouldn't happen.
On its way.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Okay, so it looks like we have a quorum. So I'm going to start the joint meeting for the Rules and Open Government Committee and Committee of the Whole. And Tony, can we have a roll call, please?
Arenas?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Peralas? Jones?
Present. All right. So we are going to start out with the agenda for August 9. And we are going to start out on pages four and five.
I can't share the agenda at the moment because my computer shut down, so we're trying to pull it up on the other computers. We're not, Megan reminded me, we have a diff, item A1 is to authorize the teleconference. And so that's before we do the review of agendas.
Okay. All right, A1 is to authorize the teleconference in accordance with the governor's COVID state of emergency. And so I would need a motion, but before I go to a motion, I guess I should ask for public comments on this item.
Okay, we have Gabriel on Zoom, and I have no speaker cards for this. Gabriel, this is regarding item A1, not items further on in the agenda. Go ahead.
Then I'll hold them, I wanted to speak to the August 9th agenda item.
Okay, thank you. Blair?
Hi, Blair Beakman here, happy August, everyone. Just a thank you that, well, I guess first a congratulations that you're meeting Rules and Open Government in council chambers again. And from that, a thank you that you're also going to continue to have the Zoom meeting process. For someone like myself, it's really helpful and needed. And just a thanks in how we're trying to figure out the best ways to serve the community most. So thank you very much for the continuing process of teleconferencing and good luck with the meeting today. Thank you.
That was the final public speaker. And what we'll need is a motion to approve the recommendation.
I'll move to teleconference.
Gray has been moved and seconded. Here, we have a roll call vote, please.
Arenas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Peralas?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will go back to the agenda for Tuesday, August 9. And starting out again on pages four and five. Pages six and seven. Pages eight and nine. 10 and 11. 12 and 13. 14 and 15. 16 and 17. 18 and 19. And there is an ad sheet when the maker of the motion, if they can include that, that'd be great. And so let's go to public comments for this agenda.
Gabriel?
My name's Gabriel Armandes, I'm the director with the CSUP with the collective. I believe item 8.3 has to do with EDBG allocations. And we would request that that item be heard maybe sometime certain around 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock that Tuesday on August 9. So that community can participate in the discussion and weigh in on how the funds are being allocated. So we'd appreciate that, thank you.
Paul Soto?
Yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. Two things, on page 14 and 19, you have an open forum designation for each one. At the end of the regular calendar, it has open forum. And then there's a separate piece that has to deal with land use. And then there's an open forum in that particular area. They're on pages 14 and 19. Now, these have never been acknowledged or never been respected in previous council meetings. And what I'm suggesting is that we adhere to the agendas. And what the agendas state very clearly is that there is an open forum piece at the end of all other items that were, that are previous to the land use issues. And then subsequent to the land use calendar, there is an open forum there. And so, number one, I'm asking that that be honored and respected without question. Because it's very clearly delineated on pages 14 and 19. Secondly, is the consent calendar, forgive me if I don't trust my government, but the consent calendar is getting stacked with items that really beg for discussion. And because there is no discussion and because somebody just like very cavalierly erased the public's ability to pull from the consent calendar, that we're deprived of our constitutional right to challenge our government, which is, which is healthy, it's good. It's good that we have citizens that keep our government in check. Because quite honestly, I don't trust my government. And so I'm asking that these consent calendar items be given more scrutiny and that some of those items have the ability for the public to pull from.
Caller 4963?
Yeah, hi, Martha O'Connell, I have a ADA request for the format of the Rules Committee agendas. On the council agendas, you put a space between the numbers for the web ID. And on the rules, you do not. All the numbers are run together. And as a visually impaired person, it's really hard for me to see, to see that. So I would request that when you put it online, please do the same spacing at the rules as you do for the council on behalf of the visually impaired. Thank you.
Blair Beakman?
Hi, Blair Beakman here, it's really good to hear Paul Soto again. Nice to hear him back. I'm also wanting to address the future consent calendar item issues. I think, I still think that there can be ways we can work on it a bit more. Good luck how we can talk about the future of consent calendars, open public policy practices. To comment on a few of the items, mostly a thank yous to yourselves, city staff and city government. The transit first policy, as a city government wanting to practice those ideas to bring back the concepts of transit in this era of COVID, thank you. I mean, just, I mean, amazing thank you. Good luck in the efforts to do that. The regional transit policies, having a pass for the whole area kind of issues and concerns and free ridership in the future. Good luck in those kind of items, how we'll be working on this. Mobility, you're going to be working on mobility issues. I'm interested in that. Disabilities Act, transition plan update with sidewalks as part of your consent calendar. That's nice, nice stuff. I know San Diego actually has a mobility commission that should be of interest. I thought I would mention at this time. 2.13 is soft story retrofit agreements, which could just be amazing work for the future of how subsidy help can just help with the overall process of the, in the relationship between tenants and owners and just, and make it an easier process for our future. Good luck in those efforts. And you have one more item about communities and stabilization and opportunity pathways. Fund commission, oh, no, no, I'm sorry, agreements for community engagement consultants. That's a future where we're going to basically be addressing the military industrial complex. That's an issue we can all
Issa? Issa? Okay, we're going to go back to council.
Thank you, I want to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the ad sheet as well as dedicate item 8.3 to a time certain of 6:00 PM.
Okay. And did you, I'm sorry, councilmember, did you also include the ad sheet?
Yes, I did.
I didn't hear, okay, thank you. Thank you, and so there was a second.
I didn't second because I have a question before I second it, but I'll second, but I also do want to ask a question about the, take the vice chair's normal line of questioning about load.
I was going to go there, but yeah.
So maybe Lee, this is for you. I'm concerned about the long land use agenda next week's meeting. It looks like we could be, it could be a series of long items at that time. So, and we also have a really long agenda before that. We have a really short agenda the week after, it looks like. Are there things that can wait a week so we can move them to the 16th? And I'm thinking even particularly 8.3. If we want to, considering the community interest and the need for time certain, it might be nice to separate that from the long land use agenda we have next week.
Thank you, councilmember Cohen. I believe 8.3 can be moved one week. However, the land use items have been publicly noticed and are on the docket to be heard.
Yeah, no, I want to keep the land use, I just was thinking about shortening the agenda before that. Because I don't want our meeting to run all the way to 8:00 before we can get to the land use item, so.
Yeah, if, and I would just ask the committee, we're happy to defer 8.3, but maybe in the, one week, but maybe in the motion pending us checking with housing, just to make sure it doesn't actually legally need to be heard by this date. It's a second reading, so I don't believe it does.
Okay. I guess I'll ask the maker of the motion if we can include that and move the other items so we shorten next week's agenda and load and balance a little bit between the two meetings.
Yeah, this seems very reasonable, I'll accept that.
Okay.
All right, great. So we have a motion on the floor, Tony?
Arenas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Peralas?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. So on to the agenda for August 16. And we are going to start out on pages four and five. Six and seven. And eight. And that is it on that. And Lee, I'm not going to ask you a load balancing question on this agenda. Okay. So we're going to take public comments.
Blair Beakman?
Hi, Blair Beakman. Or I, I need to, a public comment time, I'm going to speak a little bit more on the last item from the previous agenda. For this Tuesday, August 16th agenda, I just wanted to comment and make notes for the public, public record that items 4.1 and 4.2 is going to be about the independent police auditor and San Jose Police Department Internal Affairs reporting for the year. Just to make that known and for people to want to attend those meetings, it's an important meeting to attend. And to make that known at this time, I just thought I would offer that service. Thanks, thanks a lot.
Paul Soto?
Yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. The, the items with respect to the open forum, the two slots that are in the agendas for open forum still have not been addressed, and I'd like that addressed openly. To just delegate that to the mayor at like his discretion. And yet we have these items put in there. You wouldn't just like, you wouldn't just ignore a land use item that Gary Dillabeau was interested in getting passed. So why are we very cavalier about just, ah, we can just skip open forum? And we have open forum in two separate places inside of our agendas. I mean, to, to exercise that much power is one of the reasons why I don't trust my government. And my government has never behaved in a way that is trustworthy. And so what I'm asking very politely is that that issue be addressed. Do we have as a right for those two areas of open forum so that the public can comment in those particular areas? That's something that needs to be openly discussed. And if we don't have it coming, and it's not something that we have an absolute right to, well, then just go ahead and openly state that and then remove it from the agenda so that there's no unreasonable expectation. But I'm going to attend the meeting with an expectation, rightfully so, to be able to comment on issues that impact the context in which I live, which you are making decisions on. You are making decisions on which the, on the context in which I exist. And to negate my ability to openly comment on those issues, I think is a, is a dereliction of your responsibility to the citizens of this city. Thank you.
Issa?
Yes, I apologize, but I want to speak on C period 1.
Okay, that's two items.
You're going by pages, and I'm not sure if you're going to, you know, so are you going to be saying item C.1 for open comments? So I
Yes, we will. After this item, we have consent calendar, after consent calendar is item C1. So we'll, we'll make sure people are clear and know what we're, what item we're on.
Thank you.
Back to the committee?
Thank you. Well, entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the agenda, and I have a question after it's seconded.
I'll second.
I guess I'll ask Tony this question. I hadn't even noticed before the, that on some of our meetings, we have two open forums. And I know that you had sort of addressed this, but can you talk about how that works? And whether, you know, as the, the meeting is one long meeting, there's a difference between that versus a meeting that has two ending points?
Yes, I, I know I responded with the exact resolution to you earlier. There is a resolution that has the, the items of the agenda in the order the items are supposed to be. And it does list open forum at the end of the afternoon session, because typically there's a break. So if we end afternoon session at 4, then we would take public comment, people go back to their offices, get dinner, whatever, come back at 6:00 PM. And then we have another open forum for that evening meeting. Sometimes when the two meetings blend together, we don't have that gap. We don't call for that open forum that comes at the end of the afternoon meeting because we really didn't end the afternoon meeting until maybe 8:00 PM at night or 7:00 PM. And then we go immediately into the next items. So that, that's, that's one, that's why it's on there twice. And two, that's why we sometimes don't call for it. It's just, it becomes one long meeting instead of two separate meetings.
And then that's, that's based on how it plays out. It's not something we can build into an agenda and say this is going to be a continuous meeting versus two separate.
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't always know. I do get the question almost every week, when do you think this item will be heard? I have no idea. You know, some meetings I think are going to go on until 8, and really they end at 5. It's, so I, I'm a terrible judge of when a meeting's going to end. And so I would never be able to tell somebody, oh, this one will definitely bleed into the other meeting, or this one definitely won't. So it's hard to say ahead of time.
Can we just simplify and just have one open forum on the agenda?
We could do that, we would need to change that resolution. I, I can't just remove it, it has to come, it has to be approved by council.
Okay, well, let's
Yeah, I, I can bring that forward.
I appreciate it.
I'll just make a comment for the public, because I know there was a comment before about the item on last, the previous week's meeting on housing. And we just did get quick word that it has to be heard next week. So I want the members of the public who are interested in that topic to know that it will be on the 9th and not the 16th, as it was originally proposed.
With the time certain, or not before.
With the time certain of 6, which was in the motion, right?
All right. Thank you. So can we have a vote, please?
Sorry, Arenas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Peralas?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is review the August 15, 2022 study session agenda, gun violence prevention. Go to the public for public comments.
Okay, for I'm Blair Beakman.
Hi, Blair Beakman here. Thanks a lot for this study session. I mean, I'm feeling that, you know, with gun issues, we're starting to bring together not just good best practices by city government, but we're bringing in opponents of gun measures together. And, and you're learning to better cooperate and work on issues openly and what that can offer our future. Thank you. I think personally, I feel city government is off to a very good start in wanting to address the future of, you know, what is domestic violence and issues that are working internally within the city and wanting to really address those issues. And from that, I feel that the gun lobby groups, you know, can have a really important voice to make sure that good practices of city government are upheld. And, and they follow correct procedures in to make sure that funding will be going to really good programs that actually address domestic violence and, you know, other sets of issues around, around gun violence. So I, I think something really positive can happen out of this. And I, and I, and I hope that's the attitude we all have in, here in California and in the Bay Area about how we work our gun issues and what they're about. And I think it's different than other states. And I think we can create a future good example for other states that it will be far superior than Texas. Because people are dying in Texas because of what their policies are about. We're trying to, you know, navigate that, that whole process for all sides. And this is that sort of meeting. And thank you for that. Good luck in the efforts and, and the community process. Thank you.
Paul Soto?
Yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. It's hypocritical for this council to address gun violence when it never condemned Councilwoman Armandadis for the double murder that happened at her home via gun violence. This council has never condemned her for that publicly. That's number one. Number two is that it's also at the height of hypocrisy for Councilman Peralas, Councilwoman Esparza, and Councilwoman Carrasco to even weigh in on the issue, considering that 30 days before those double murders happened at Rebecca Armandadis's house, those three were notified via email. I know, because I'm the one that sent the email, that specifically somebody would be killed as a result of gun violence at her house. This is what I stated specifically that is in the public record in those emails that went out to Carrasco, Esparza, and Peralas. And you failed to act on that. And because of your failure to act and your gross negligence, which you're, at least Peralas is a mandated reporter. Councilman Peralas is a mandated reporter because he's a police officer. So he should have conducted an investigation. He did not. Because he did not, those two boys were murdered. That's a double murder, that's a capital murder case. And so to think that Councilman Peralas, Carrasco, and Esparza are not accountable for that is the height of hypocrisy. Because these copious amounts of information, copious amounts of text messages stating very clearly that Councilman Peralas was well aware of the gunfire that had happened towards me, but chose to do nothing about it. And because he didn't conduct a police investigation, or at least ask that an investigation be conducted, Councilwoman Armandadis was bold enough, emboldened, to just keep on her, her trajectory, which ultimately led to the deaths of Mr. Masias and Mr. Sanchez.
Back to the committee?
Thank you, I want to entertain a motion.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Gray has been moved and seconded, Tony?
Arenas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Peralas?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the consent calendar, so we'll go to public comments.
I just wanted to remind people, this is consent calendar, this is not item C1, C1 will be after this. Blair?
Hi, Blair Beakman here. I guess the consent calendar has a public comment on it, I mean, a public record letter. I wanted to first comment that I found this consent calendar to be, to be a little long. And that you have items of the, of the city management report and work plans for, you know, two committees and a ton of other items, including public record. That's kind of a lot. Is there a way in the future, maybe you can have, you know, two consent calendar items at the same time, sections A and B? To, because the public comment, I have a lot of public comments that's not going to be able to be happening that I think should be allowed and needs to be considered. With that said, the public record letter from former councilperson Blanca Alvarado was interesting. It was very bare bones in her feelings about what she used to have to deal with cruising issues. Good luck, it is a question of balance with something. I think Rowell Peralas, Councilperson Peralas has a good balance how, that I hope we can be addressing, you know, the future of these cruising issues. And good luck how we can do that. And I, you know, I think she was around, Blanca Alvarado has been around for when the consent, for when agendas used to have public comment at the end of its regular agenda and its land use items. It's a nice feature to have, and thank you that Paul mentioned it to talk about it and just to clear the air about it. I hope we can continue it and, and work out and continue a good system with it. And yeah, I think that's about it for myself. I don't think, I, there, there can be other consent calendar items to talk about. There's work plan items, and as always with the city auditors report, you know, that, that has just a wealth of issues and items that people can talk about if they want to. And just thought I'd mention it at this time, and thanks a lot.
Paul Soto?
Yes, Paul Soto. Exactly what I was talking about, that, look, we have five council members that are going to be leaving. They're going to be gone. They're not going to be able to sit in except, or at least four, to accept responsibility and accountability for the policy decisions that they have made that affect the context in which I live. Okay? So these consent calendars are going to start being stacked more and more and more as it comes time for them to segue their way out of, you know, making their mess of my city and what they've done to the, to the Chicanos in this city and what they've done historically. You know, the land use issue, the land use public comment is critically important because we're talking about redlining. We are talking about redlining, so to take away for, for Vice Mayor Chapi Jones to just very cavalierly, hey, well, we'll just erase it, we'll just take it out, shows a historical amnesia. He doesn't really comprehend or understand, or I would venture so far as to say even care as to whether or not these land use issues with respect to redlining are amended. I personally do. I have a vested interest in making certain that those land use issues do have their separate public comment and that they have an open forum, and in fact, that it happened before the meeting and not after it. And that open forum start before the meeting and not after it. You see, because the reason why we have these open government meetings is so that the, so that the, so that the public, so that the voters can be informed. So really, we are the most important people at these meetings, not you, we are. You do our bidding, you get your power. You do our bidding. You get your power and derive your power from the consent of the government. And I don't see you thinking, I think you think it the other way, the other way around, that somehow or another we're beholden to you. And that's not the case. You are beholden to us and you answer to us.
Back to the committee.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. Regarding the city auditor's fiscal year work plan, twenty-two, twenty-three work plan, I have some questions. Is Joe here?
I'm here. Yeah, apologize. I'm not there in person.
I'm not there in person either.
Okay.
I wanted to find out a couple of things. So you, the carryover projects and the new projects fourteen to nineteen, are those in the order that they're likely to be done?
The, so fourteen through nineteen, potentially, so the carryover projects are all underway, so one through five, and then the next two up would be our city forest development permitting. And it really kind of depends on the team that's available, but those would likely be the next ones up. Between, before those will be Team San Jose, which we do every year in October, November, and the annual services report. So either of those would be starting probably end of this, end of this calendar, beginning of the end calendar. They'll probably be starting around the same time, the city forest development permitting. And then the other four will be kind of availability and kind of managing with the departments as well.
Okay. And I understand wanting to balance workload. I just, looking at the additional items not considered or recommended, employee recruitment and retention is something that we've talked a lot about and has been particularly difficult for us. And I'm just thinking ahead to, if we have a slowdown in the economy, might that be a place for us to, to help with our, with employee recruitment? Hiring as the economy slows down. And so I wanted to find out if there was any way we could add that one. And I'm, I want you to know I'm being, I'm trying to be mindful of your workload because I wanted to also add the building inspections and the business process automation program, but, but I wanted to pick the most important thing, which I think is the employee recruitment and retention.
So I can actually speak to each of those, but the employer recruitment attachment, so this is one. I spoke with, this is, I agree, it's very important and it will, it's an audit that we will do at some point. I did speak with the HR director. They have a number of initiatives underway right now, and so the timing would be weird. We'd be working auditing something that was in flux. And so that's something that we, that's really the consideration on that is it might be a little further down the road as they get some of their programs in place because they're doing a lot of work, especially on the recruitment side, but also on the retention. So that was the reasoning on that one.
Okay.
And in terms of the other two, the business process automation, I think there's just a little bit more thinking about what it looks like because it's, each, each project is a little different, and so getting our brain around, trying to scope that a little bit more specifically about what, and, because I think the question I have really is around, are we ensuring that the control structures are in place? As we're automating these systems, are we making sure that approvals are correct, the segregation of duties, all these certain things? But getting our brain a little more around the risks and, and what the audit looks like before we kind of launch into something. And the building inspections, one, again, very important, but I think the, the development permitting one, which is on our work plan, would come first. And so it's just sequencing the workload with PPC. So that's how we kind of address each of those.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate that. That's it for my comments. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Lee, did you want to?
No, actually, Vice Mayor, the city auditor addressed my issue.
All right. So Councilmember Davis, can you make the motion?
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Tony?
Arenas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Hi.
Davis?
Yes.
Peralis?
Yes.
Jones?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now on to items C1, community outreach for quick build interim housing. And I know that we have early consideration forms. So Lee, I was going to ask you to start out by speaking to those forms.
Sure. And Jim O'Paul and Omar Passions is here for further questions and answers from the committee to the Mayor Licardo and Councilmember Foley in Huma's memo. There is an early consideration form. Those items are green. And much of that work has started already over the summer. And then just want to note on Councilmember Cohen's memorandum that there are items that are green and yellow. So recommendation one is green of recommendations two through four. One is a resource and capacity issue for staff, kind of on expansion of the scope. But the others address previous council direction. So if the rules committee does wish to revisit those directions, this memorandum should move forward to the full council to revisit that direction.
Thank you, Lee. I'm going to shift the order just a bit, and I'm going to actually go to the committee for discussion and then go back to, I'll go to public comments. So I see, the mayor, do you have your hand raised? Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Vice Mayor, and my apologies for being remote on a phone right now, having some technical difficulties, but hopefully you can hear me. I was just hoping to, thank you. I was hoping to speak briefly to the memorandum that was co-signed by Councilmembers Foley and Mendez myself. And I appreciate the concerns raised by Councilmember Cohen in his memorandum. After discussions with staff, and I'm not sure who's there from staff to speak to this, but my understanding is staff should be able to get all the documents, all the historic documents about the, the land in question in District Four within a week or two. And that should enable everyone to very clearly call the question whether this is parkland or not. And I certainly am not going to express an opinion on that other than to say I agree with Councilmember Cohen that we shouldn't be building on charter parkland. That's, that's not what we're doing, but, or not, not what anyone intends to do. So obviously, if this is charter parkland, we should go elsewhere. But in the meantime, I understand this, this committee could not take action on Councilmember Cohen's recommendation to, to halt construction. That would be for the full council. I would just suggest, you know, we could move all these forward together if the council or the committee so chooses. The intention of the memo is pretty straightforward, simply to be able to enable the council at a hearing, at a public hearing where everybody can be heard to call the question if there is going to be a significant pivot in some way or another. I think we all want to move forward rapidly where sites, viable sites are identified. And then obviously to really accelerate this process of identifying the specific services that will help preserve quality of life in those neighborhoods that have concerns. And I think what we've seen with these other communities where they've been built is that many of those concerns ultimately did not materialize, and these are very good neighbors. But I'm just hopeful that what we can do is keep, keep this moving forward at the same time that obviously we vet this very important issue about parkland that Councilmember Cohen's identified. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Cohen?
Yeah, thank you. And I want to first thank the mayor and Councilmembers Foley and Mendez for recognizing the need for more outreach and work in the community. I know that's already started. So whether we pass this or not, that outreach has been occurring. It was obviously a direction that the council gave on June twenty-first to do that. And, and I appreciate Omar and Jim for being out in the community and doing, beginning that process, not just for this site, but for the site, the other sites that were approved and other potential sites in District Four where those community members have been, some have been notified already and participated in some of those meetings. So, you know, we know a little bit more. I learned a lot in the last month since the action that happened on June twenty-first. And I want to thank members of the community who have helped me learn more of the history of this park. Even though I know this neighborhood well, I didn't, wasn't fully aware of this, the uses of the space and the history of the space. There's information, I think, that the council didn't have in June when this passed about how this park was used. And there's a distinction between this space and other spaces where EIH has been built. And largely, we've built EIH on sites that were unused, undedicated, sometimes unusable for other purposes. And this is a space that's obviously not that. This is a space that is used by the public and is, by many definitions, parkland. I understand the legal question that's being discussed as to whether or not there's a strict legal, this is strictly a legal definition of a park. To me, if we're getting into the nitty gritty of whether this meets that, and we're not even sure we can figure that out without a lot of research, that kind of tells me that, that we're getting into somewhat of a semantic legal language argument as opposed to a practical argument. And I would still ask my council colleagues to understand that, you know, if we could potentially defend a decision, maybe, that this isn't parkland, but that doesn't mean that it's still the right thing to do to take open space out of the community's, the ability for a community to benefit from it. So I just want to, I'm going to make a motion, I'm going to talk about a few things about this park. And, you know, obviously, there's, I've learned a lot about what it means to be a legal charter-protected park versus a future park versus a, you know, an open space. And, you know, there's three elements we need. One is that it has to be dedicated. One is that it has to be improved. I've had improvements from the city. One is that it is accessible and used by the public. We know that the first and third of those are definitely true on this site. It was dedicated by the city council in two thousand and two as a parkland, part of a park master plan that was developed and approved. We know that it's used by the public, and we know that it's not just a park, but it's also operates as a classroom for some of our students who go to school across the street. Their teachers bring them into that space, walk through and use the area in front of and at the park ponds to be, experience open space and be out in nature. And so it's used not just by the students in the school, but by the community. People are out walking their dogs. People use the trails. The obvious question, the legal question is about number two, is have there been enough improvements to make it a park? I'm not sure what the, the threshold is for enough improvements, but I will say that as part of the master plan for that park space, a parking lot was built, a perimeter fence was installed, a trail was, was built and maintained, trees and irrigation were installed. There's a water fountain and benches in the park, all of those in the area that's being proposed for this site. There also are, were at one time picnic benches and barbecue pits in that park. The city did do those improvements due to concerns in the community. Those have been removed, but there was definite investment in this park space. So I believe that it does meet the threshold of number two, and even if it doesn't legally meet the threshold of number two, it certainly, I think, meets the smell test as to whether or not we want to set a precedent in this city of saying that a space that might not legally be a park but has been dedicated by the council as a park should be removed as open space in a place that values open space so heavily. So I'll just speak to my memo for a minute. I know about the, there's the question of the yellows in the early consideration form. The reason why I wanted to go a little bit further and say, let's pause the work on the park, even though council took action to do these things, and the memo from the mayor and the council members talks about doing these things in parallel. The, one of the yellow, one of the reasons for one of the yellows was a resource constraint. And my concern was, if we're resource constrained and we, and we will potentially conclude that this is really not a good idea to build at this site, I don't want us to be in a position that we haven't had the resources to identify the best site in the district for EIH. It's important to me, and I know it's important to the council, to find a site and build EIH in District Four. And so I wanted to make sure that we at least send the message that we want to prioritize the identification of an appropriate space. And that's the reason for that in the memo. As far as coming back to council for the other items, I mean, we can, I think, I would, I would leave it open at this point to see what the appropriate time is to come back. I know obviously the first memo says we're coming back in November for the decision about whether to use an alternate site or this site. So in theory, we are coming back to council at some point. I just want to make sure that when we come back in November, the answer we get isn't, we couldn't identify another site because we didn't have the resources to do it. So that's, that's what I'm focused on. Obviously, if the attorney's office comes back and says this is charter-protected parkland and it's off the table, then this issue goes away. And we maybe can wait for that analysis before we decide when we would bring it back to full council. So I won't necessarily recommend a certain time for that, but I want to make a motion that combines the two memos. I will accept items, want to make motion to accept recommendations one, three, and four from mayor's memo with Mendez and Foley. Except item two from that memo as well, as amended in my memo to, to remove the part about doing the two things in parallel. And also, I want to be more specific and say that we would come back to council by the end of November. I think the one hundred twenty day from the publishing of this memo is a little bit, it's not specific enough. And I think it's good to be specific and say, we have to be back by the end of November to make the decision as a council. And then items two, three, and four of my memo as well. So that's my motion.
So, Councilmember, so the, the direction is that your memo would have to go to council to even approve. So are you recommending a date?
I'm not recommending a date yet because I want to consult consultation with staff and as we begin the process. So my office is committed to helping with the process of identifying other sites and reaching out to the property owners there and beginning to find out what's available and what's not, and helping narrow down that list. As we begin to do that, we'll get a better feel as to how much time we need and how, how necessary it will be to come back to council because maybe we quickly identify a site. So I think I'd like to give it some time to see that process work, get the analysis from the attorney's office, and then we can talk. I can talk with the city manager's office about when and if it needs to come back to council. These items would obviously be pending council, coming back to council. But in my opinion, this is a message of the will of this rules committee that we ought to make sure that we're doing all due diligence on finding alternative sites.
No, I, I, I understand, but I guess the issue is, in order to change the council direction, it has to go to council either next week or the week after.
Or sometime, I mean, or, or a month from now if we find out. I mean, that's why I'm saying I don't want to pick a date today. I think, is that okay not to pick a date today? I lost Lee and Nora what they think about that.
So I personally think it's okay to not pick a date. I think speaking from the administration's perspective, and in line with the mayor was saying, we should know in the next several days or two weeks on the parks issue. And so bringing that issue forward as well as recommendations two, three, and four in your memorandum are probably the best approach. And I would want to do that sooner rather than later because that has ramifications on others' decisions. I wouldn't want to push that out to November because for us to pause the planning, that does need council action. So we would want to do that sooner or later. So I don't know about like August sixteenth or the meeting after that, but I would think we would try and do it in the next few weeks.
Okay, I'm okay with that. Let's, let's see what the, how it comes back, and then we'll decide on the date for bringing it back to council.
Okay. So that's the motion. Do I hear a second? And I see Councilmember Davis's hand raised. So go ahead, Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. I'm, I'm happy to entertain the discussion of the pause in the parallel process. But I just want to say that in the, in the whole scheme of things, Councilmember Cohen, I, I think timing is important because we have heard very, a lot from the community about how much we need to move quickly and, and have solutions up and running as, as quickly as possible. So I'm not, I'm happy to have that council discussion about whether we want to pause the parallel process, but I don't support it outright. So I just want to be clear about that. I did also want to ask, given everything that's in the mayor at all memo, is that something that rules can go forward with, or does that all come back to council for us to decide as well? Because it's staff direction for coming back, et cetera, et cetera.
Can you repeat the question, Councilmember?
So everything in the, in the mayor's memo and Councilmember Cohen's motion about coming back to the council in one hundred twenty days, et cetera, are those? are those items for the entire council to decide? Or is that rule saying to staff, come back in 120 days? What are we doing with this motion in addition to council member Cohen's, that you were clear about council member Cohen's has to go back to council for new direction?
Yeah, so I don't think the addition of 120 days, I don't think that, that's that's work that we're doing. We've greenlit. I think that's fine. It doesn't need to go back to council. What I was saying is pausing work or removing deadlines that the full council has already taken does require a council vote. You know, we can put the brakes on it for a week or two while we figure out other issues that have come up. But actual council authority at some point would be needed to stop that work.
Okay, I'd like to put in a plug. I will, I'll second the motion so that we can take it to the council discussion. I'd like to put in a plug for doing this on the 16th. We've already seen that that agenda is fairly light, and I don't want this process paused for any longer than necessary. And I'm unlikely to want to pause the process after council discussion. Just to be clear.
Thank you, council member, council member Peralos.
Yeah, thank you. And so just to confirm as well, what we would be needing to take action on at the full council, say it is the 16th, would simply be to pause the the already pre-approved direction or not. We wouldn't necessarily need to approve the work that's suggested in the memo by the mayor and our other colleagues, correct?
That was for David.
I mean, I think it's probably for you, but I mean, I think that's what we heard from Lee was that what's in the mayor and council member Jimenez and Foley memo doesn't need to come back to council. In reality, I think it's, maybe Lee can clarify this. Items two and four on my memo, in theory, need to come back to council because they are changing a deadline and pausing the design work. And those are actions that the council took to direct. But I think item three doesn't necessarily need to come back to council. I mean, obviously, there's a question of resources, but that's always a question of when we do things.
And council member Cohen, what in the mayor's memo are you bringing forward in your recommendation here?
I'm bringing all of it forward, except that I'm amending recommendation one just to say, return to council with by the end of November to enable public to share feedback and concerns about specific sites and to, and about any other options explored by staff. Just to tighten that one up a little bit and not talk about the question of parallel or not parallel.
Okay. And what we have direction to do already, and what staff is already doing, right, what's commenced, it's we're out, we are exploring other sites. There is a parallel process where there is approval to move forward on the the sites that we've approved in June. And there was the opportunity provided to allow for, I guess, you know, a review of alternative sites. And if we wanted to actually switch to another site, maybe, Lee, you can chime in, we actually even gave prior approval that that wouldn't need to come back for a council vote, right? That if there was an alternative site that was identified, that that site could be swapped out essentially then, for instance, this Noble site. Is that correct?
Councilor Peralos, this is Jim Ortball. That was my recollection as well.
Okay, and so I guess maybe somebody can tell, because I'm really not comfortable with anything than any of the memos. I feel like we have all the opportunity that we're asking for to do what, you know, we want to do, which is, we have a parallel opportunity, we have a site that's pre-approved, but we also have a chance to review other sites. Maybe, how is that going on reviewing these other sites? I understand there is this potential conflict with the Noble site, and if it is a part, a formal designated part. And we will find that answer out over the next couple of weeks. But aside from that, how is the the process going, the evaluation going on potentially swapping out with another site in D4?
Just a quick update. Again, council process, this is Jim Ortball. What we're doing is, we're doing both of these in parallel. We're taking in suggestions for alternative sites, both in District Four and in District 10. We're also trying to advance the sites the council gave us direction to proceed forward. So we're doing both of those in parallel. It's a lot of work, but on the alternative sites, we've gotten suggestions from a number of locations. Omar has stood up a community outreach process and a form on our webpage where members of the community can submit suggested alternatives with some basic information. We take that into the queue. We've received sites from both council District Four and council District 10 to evaluate. They are in the queue. I've worked with our real estate office as well, and they have identified some potential sites. As we know, sites coming in as potential alternatives, many of them don't pan out. That's been our experience over the years, but they'll all go through a thorough evaluation, and we're always trying to find sites that can work. I mean, that's been our effort overall. And so this will go through a very thorough evaluation. The way Omar set it up, too, is we're using August 15th as the deadline for the community or others to submit sites so that we can get a thorough evaluation done by the time we would either come back to council in the November timeframe or go with an alternative site if that was deemed appropriate. The June 21st direction also told the administration to work with the mayor's office and the affected council offices on an alternative site to ensure that that alternative would be acceptable to both the mayor's office and the affected council office. So that was kind of the nuance of, you know, could we pick an alternative site and not come back to council? The answer would be yes, but we would need to coordinate that with the mayor's office and the affected council office.
Okay, yeah, that, I mean, that was my understanding, and I was comfortable with that direction because I felt it it gave us the options to move forward swiftly, as we've been trying to do now. I mean, wouldn't even call it swiftly. It's been six years since we've set out on a goal to try and have one of these tiny homes or emergency interim housing communities in every district across the city and and in fact, right locations that were the very first suggested over in District Nine. Right, ran through a similar challenge as what we're experiencing here. And to this day, we still don't have an EIH site in that district. And so that's why I was not comfortable with sort of any further delay in June. It really didn't force us to take action or force an alternative, which I think is what's happening now, right, is we actually are having a significant amount of involvement, time, investment, energy from a lot of different people, right, from city staff, from the council office, from the community. And the reason why is because we have this Noble site that is pre-approved. If that was not the case, if we had simply delayed the process back in June, I can guarantee you, we'd be where we were at with District Nine, which is nowhere, quite frankly. And so if we want to move forward on resolving what we all consider the biggest crises that our community and our city is dealing with, which is homelessness, we're never going to do so if we continue to delay on solutions. And so in this case, I'm not going to argue that Noble is the perfect site or not. It is a site that we have evaluated. It's a site that's approved. Clearly, it's a site that needs a little bit more analysis, and so that's going on. But at the same time, I'm not comfortable simply delaying unless we have an alternative ready to go. And it doesn't sound like we have an alternative ready to go yet. It sounds like we have some suggestions, and I would be happy to, you know, to approve an alternative site if one of those suggestions is able to move forward and be viable. Jim, as you point out, right, you have analyzed now dozens and dozens of sites across the whole city, and there are challenges with a lot of them. Some of them, right, we can't surmount. And so we've crossed off more sites across the city than we have been able to make viable. So I recognize the challenge with that as well. And I guess I'm just kind of, I'm confused as to why we might need any any motion or alternative direction to, unless it is what councilman Cohen is suggesting, which is simply to change you know, the prior direction. And if that's, you know, that is his will, certainly, I think that the full council can make that decision. But otherwise, I think we have all the direction we need today to continue to proceed, to continue to allow alternatives to be evaluated. And I don't see a need for a shift in that. I know that council member Davis has stated that she's seconding the motion here and willing to have maybe that conversation with the council, but not necessarily willing to entertain the delay any further. I certainly wouldn't either. So I'll leave my comments there. Thanks.
Thank you. Council member Cohen?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I forgot to remind the staff. I wanted to put up a picture just to let, show some, you know, some activity that we've seen in the park in the last month. But I do want to, so while they're doing that, I want to make a couple of comments about that point. Thank you, council member Peralos. It's true. I mean, my opinion has been, what you said is correct. If, I'm diligently, my staff's diligently working. I'm diligently working, and I'm, you know, hoping that we get, you know, some resource, enough resources from the city to help us identify that alternative site. And I don't doubt that if we find that alternative site, that there's no, there's be no objection to using an alternative site. I don't think the council necessarily took an action to say, this, we doing this because we want it there. I understand the need. And I I will say, I don't know, I don't know that my commitment to you is worth anything because it's just me saying this at a council, at a meeting, but I, you know, my staff has been working almost full-time on nothing but this for the last month, and will continue identifying sites, reaching out to property owners, reaching out to everybody to try to get the pre-work done so the staff has at least a head start on trying to identify sites. The reason why I think the mayor wrote the memo along with the other council members about bringing it back to council is to right, to right a wrong that I pointed out at that meeting, which was, this was done in a reverse order. We we did this and then said, we'll do the outreach, when I was trying to ask for the council at the time to do the outreach before we made a commitment to a site. And so I think it's important for us to through that outreach process, at least bring back to council, as the mayor has suggested, the feedback from the community as part of our final decision about the site. And that's why I think it's still worthy bringing back to council. And I will say that, given additional information about this space, it is, you know, certainly possible that Nora and and the attorney's office will come back with a determination that says, well, this isn't really a charter-protected park. But then I still think there's a worthy conversation for us to have as a council as to whether there's enough elements of open space and parkland here that do we really want to make this decision about converting it? And let me ask, I know John Sisorelli's in the room. I don't want to put you too much on the spot, but John, the director of parks, might talk a little bit about, you know, what this space is like, how it's been maintained, but also, you know, what we're concerned about as far as precedent, or what he might be concerned about. I can ask him about as far as precedent of how we use land that we've committed to being open space. So let me, let him answer that.
Thank you, council member. As you mentioned, John Sisorelli, Director of Park Recreation and Neighborhood Services. So we have been looking closely at this site. I will say there's some gray area here, but before I make my comments, I want to be sure that I'm clear, that I understand that the city is in a housing crisis, and it's important to locate sites. Also want to be clear that when there is chartered parkland, you know, it is my obligation as director of the department to defend chartered parkland. So I find myself in a strange crosshair. So for us, we look at the three elements that I believe were mentioned earlier. Has it been dedicated? Has it been improved? And is it open to the public? I think from dedication, I feel strongly that's a yes. It's been dedicated. The city approved and voted on a master plan to make this a park. I think it's clear that it's open to the public. You only have to visit to see that. So everything falls on this issue of improved. And I'm sorry to say that we have not, for whatever reason, in the history of our department or the city, developed a definition of improved. So that is why we're vacillating around, does it meet all three of these criteria? So that's what we're asking for the next two weeks to sort out. That said, we do take care of the park. It is not, you know, it's not a nice grass turf, if those of you are familiar with it. It looks like open space. We have agreements with other agencies, including the Water District and others, to use this as open space, to connect it to the park chain, which we did, to put some trails in it, which we did. So there are some minor improvements. So really, the devil's in the details of how much improvement equals improvement. And so that's where we're stuck, but that's where we're going to work to make sure that we can offer a resolution within the next couple of weeks on that particular item.
Yeah, thank you. And I guess that sort of makes my point, that I think it's valuable for the council to have one more discussion as to whether even if this strictly doesn't rise to the definition of something that needs to be protected, whether this really is a precedent we want to set about how we use space that's been dedicated by council action as open space. So that's why I think it should come back to the council. So I'll leave it at that, and thank you for your patience with my comments and then allow the chair to go to public comment.
Thank you. So we will go to public comment. Tony?
Okay, this is the opportunity, if you wanted to speak on C1, to raise your hand on Zoom or to turn in a speaker card if you're in person. I'm going to call the first three names. When I call a name of the person who's in the council chambers, don't wait, like, just come immediately as soon as you hear your name. You're going to line up next to the security guard over here. The first speaker is Kanson Chu, followed by Carl Ball, Tom Wilson, and Jasmine. So if the four of you could make your way down, line up, first speaker, go to the podium. Mr. Chu?
Honorable mayor, vice mayors, and the members of the rules committee. My name is Kanson Chu, has been a resident of San Jose for 44 years, and was also very honored to serve the various community with many of you on the dais as a council member representing the District Four. I'm here in my official role as a member of the various union school district board members. But before I go to my talking point prepared by the superintendent, I just wanted to remind you that when I was in the council, and we have dedicated that piece of land as the one and only one dog park on the east side of San Jose. And also, we have spent the taxpayers' money and finished a final design draft. So if I go back to my archive, I may be able to find the chart, but I'm pretty sure that the parks and rec department will also have a copy of that. So back to my script, as a member of the various, various union school district board of trustee, I'm here to speak regarding to the city's decision to use an open, shared space near Noble Elementary School for an emergency interim housing project. A formal letter has been sent to the clerk, and I'm hoping that you all have a copy. Our board had a meeting last night and was more than 60, 70 parents. And then we have a hearing, and by the consensus, we have issued a letter with some recommendations, and they are not only applicable to the Noble site, but it could be applicable citywide. So I do have the letter here. I don't know if I have time to read through it, but I'll definitely provide to the city clerk's office. Thank you very much for your time.
Next speaker. How are you? It's so nice to see you.
Please, please.
My question to you guys is really simple.
Hold on for one second. Sorry, sorry, sir. Please refrain, please refrain from applauding because it slows down the process, and people are going to be waiting to speak. So I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead.
I live in the Brandy Lane area. And right after we had our last meeting at the perk ponds, I drove around to the various parks in the neighborhood just to get an idea to see how one park is marked opposed to the other park. Now, all the parks in our area have the same signage on it, and there would be no way to tell if one park is more special than the other. So the other thing I did is I went around the parks, and if I'm looking at it this way, if you don't think a park is special, and it doesn't make it off limits to housing, there's several parks that have a lot of area in the back of them, which could easily be used for what your project is. In fact, if you go to In fact, if you go to Cataldi Park, you go around the corner, do that little dog leg to the right, there's a whole area right next to highway that has nothing on it, just trees, nothing. You can put houses there. There's another park, Commodore Park, which is on Jackson and Commodore Avenue. It has a little playground area in the front, and it has a huge open space behind it. And the only thing on that property is a community garden. So I'm wondering, have you looked at any of these places? Because if you want space, it's close to the street, you could get water, you can get sewage to it real easy, you can get power to these places, and it's far enough away from the community that it wouldn't be in their face. So that's my suggestion, that you got to continue looking around, because I think, I'm convinced there are better places than the Noble area. So that's my comments.
Thank you. Next speaker. Also, Zhu Linpeng, Yumi, and Hiben Liu, please make your way to the line. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Tom Wilson. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm not going to go into all the reasons a homeless development on Noble is a bad idea, as these points have been well illustrated. Instead, I'll tell you how I feel about it. My family and I have lived in Barriessa for over 32 years. My kids grew up in this neighborhood, went to Noble Elementary and Piedmont Middle Schools, and I've enjoyed the Reach Two Park for decades. Now I take my grandkids to the park to walk the dog, ride bikes, and enjoy the open space, scenic vistas, and abundant wildlife. We all agree that homelessness is a major issue, but so too is preserving parkland and wildlife habitat. You all understand the importance of parks to the mental and physical well-being of your constituents. Yes, your constituents, the ones you voted into off, the ones who voted you into office, pay your salary and pay for every program you initiate. So it shouldn't be a surprise just how betrayed my neighbors and I felt upon hearing of your intentions to take away our park. The quality of life in this city has been circling the drain for years, and what are you doing about it? Building a bigger drain? If this park is converted to a homeless housing development, then it puts all other city parks in jeopardy of the same. My wife and I bought our home in this area because we didn't want to live in the concrete jungle of downtown San Jose. But now you're bringing the concrete jungle to us by taking away our park. Please seriously reconsider your plans for this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Councilmember and the city attorney. So I, they have a presentation over there, use your eyes to look at the side, Noble side, how close to the two middle elementary school, and one elementary school, one middle school, and for the library. It's all the kids' playground, and also really the open space for the residents nearby. And yes, America, the American country, when you guys voted for yes, and without a public hearing, this is called American democracy, you now tell the residents, you guys build a tiny home near our residence area? This is your purpose? We voted for you guys. You guys work for the city of San Jose, not for your own purpose, okay? Please consider the kids' safety and the environment we live, and this is a park, definition of a park, not use the political purpose for you guys. Please, special for our council members, your district, you have a high population of homeless, you want to guys sweep out, put in my district? This is unfair. Consider, put your shoes in my district. Think about that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Again, I want to ask the people in attendance to not applaud, because it slows down the process. Thank you.
And before you start, Zhao Zhang, if you could please come down? Go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Zhu Lin, and I'm here to ask for your help to vote yes to our Councilman Cohen's motion to consider alternative site to Noble. And here are my reasons. Number one, very obviously, if you look at a picture, and also, Councilman Cohen said this is a parkland, and we have, there is a city master plan, and the map is there, planting zones, play areas all marked there, and even the parking land is there built. And if you actually go to the website of San Jose Park, and you will find this is Penitassea Creek Reach Two, and everything on the website. And number two, like Jasmine said, this is a very hot area in and between all the schools. This is 50 feet away from Noble Elementary School with 423 kids, and quarter mile away from Tongyo Elementary with 268 kids, quarter mile away from Piedmont Middle School with 586 kids. And it might just be a number to a lot of people, but they're our kids, and we really care and love them. So please try just a little, you know, feel our feel, please. And after all, it is not very convincing that Noble Side is the only choice within D4, you know, to build this project, and we believe there are a lot more sites that can better serve this project. It is very far away from a lot of the groceries and the major publics. So taking myself as an example, I spent half day myself, I drove around the county line, and I found four sites, and I submitted to Omar and Jim, and for the consideration, and they are all within D4, three land city-owned, one VTA-owned, they are all safety, water zone safe, and they are all greater than one acre, and they are all flat. So I would really like to ask for your help to help Councilman Cohen and us. All right, thank you.
You next speaker.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak in front of you today. So I'm living in San Jose last 11 years, and I have two children who goes to Noble Elementary School, which is right next to this candidate site. So as a parent, I'm concerned about the safety if the homeless home is built. And also, my children love to play in that park. So I'm really surprised that it's, you know, there's a discussion, it's not the park. Me, as a community member, we thought that it's our park. So if you go there in the morning, people walking with dogs, or running, and taking, you know, walk with friends, so that's our very important asset to our community. So, yeah, and after school, my kids play in the area with their friends. And also, we always go there, since they are baby, to look at the wildlifes. So please do not take away from this park from our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Also, hold on. I have, I'm not sure if this is Kan Line or Karleen, last name Ding, please make your way to the line, and Ton Chu, thank you. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Councilman. My name is Hiben Liu. I live, I'd like to express my concerns about the Noble Side you choose to build the IH. So I live just next to the neighborhood besides the Noble Side. So the first time I went there, we were immediately attracted by this park, because it's really beautiful. So wherever, since we moved in, we use it as a daily basis. We walk around there, and we see people jogging, walking, running, and we see people walk dogs there, and you can see also ducks, birds, and geese swimming in the ponds. I suggest, Councilman, just maybe not vote in such a rush, just spend some time, maybe one day you pay a visit to the site. I assure you, you will just fall in love with it in the first sight, because it's beautiful, it's quiet, and it's lively. I mean, if you can go there and take a look, you can definitely feel what we feel, you can understand the emotion we have about it, and you can understand what a loss it will be if you take it away from us. So please, consider again, and think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'm going to ask the members in attendance to please not applaud, and I'm sure at some point you're going to get tired of me saying it, so please, can we just move forward? Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. I know this is 2:00 PM. Most of the people in our community are working in their, are working, and they could not come. So we only have a very small portion of us come, because everybody of us has to work very hard to pay the tax to live in this neighborhood. So first of all, I want to say is, I see that whatever we say, how good, how much harmful it will be to our kids, how beautiful is the park, you won't listen, but I want to point out a few fundamental issues that will hint that you guys won't win. Whoever want to push this forward publicly or secretly, you guys won't win this, because we are here for our home, and for our kids, and for our community, and we have much larger foundation, solid foundation, and we have much more motivation than you have. And then, the fundamental issues I'm seeing here are, first of all, some of you who want to push this forward, declaim this is emergencies. With this emergency term, you can bypass any criteria. I think this is not democracy, it's dictatorship. We came to this country as an immigrant to pursue the freedom, democracy, but every one of us are right now very disappointed by what you guys are doing, that you guys means who are publicly or secretly push this forward. So I think we should hold on something. I'm right now a U.S. citizen, I just became a U.S. citizen this year, because I want to hold on this democracy and freedom, and I hope you guys can also support us as city council member or any officials we have that we have voted, okay? The second fundamental issue is, this proposal was voted A to two without noticing the public. It was sneaking in. So this avoided the Brown Act in.
Thank you. Next speaker. Also, I have Elva Wilson, Sarah, Mark Comfort, and Lee Wheeler. So again, that's Elva, for those of you who can hear me. Elva Wilson, Sarah, Mark Comfort, and Lee Wheeler, make your way to the line. Go ahead, speaker. Thank you for waiting.
Good afternoon, Mayor and all the council members. My name is Xiao Zhen, a mom of kids of nine and six. My son sits right there. Hi, Brian said hi. He goes to Noble Elementary, which is right across the proposed Noble Side. To me, kids' safety is my biggest concern. Last week, a homeless man was allegedly stabbed to death by another homeless man in Santa Monica, at Santa Monica Library. According to the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Service Administration, 20% to 25% of the homeless population in the United States suffer from some form of severe mental illness. The proposed Noble Site is .1 mile from Noble Elementary with 423 kids, and .4 mile to Tongyo Elementary with 268 kids, and Piedmont Middle with 586 kids. Many kids must walk past the street in front of the proposed Noble Site to go home, and quite a few spend their afternoon in the library, who can guarantee their safety? August 3rd, which is yesterday, the Los Angeles City Council voted to ban homeless encampment within 500 feet of schools and daycare centers. Here, I sincerely urge the city council to apply the same restriction in San Jose on selecting the sites. And as an engineer, I'm told if the way to solve one issue will bring a bigger one, then that's not the correct way in fixing it. So true, we must work urgently and collaboratively to solve the homeless issue we have in our city, yet not at the cost of putting our kids in a higher risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you for giving me a chance to speak. The Noble Site, in my mind, I don't know how the staff came up with the decision that's one of the best sites available, but it doesn't really pass the smell test. If you, if you, if you're not listening to the, can you feel the anger from the constituent? You know how wrong it is, your decisions, the decision that you're making? In all your political campaigning, you said that you care about our safety and our children's future. The decision you're making clearly don't say that. As a father, I truly believe that our children's are the futures, and we should put all our resources to protecting them. The decision the council are making clearly goes against it. You're not even giving us the decency of coordinating with our school boards, you're not contacting any of the residents to tell them that you're doing this, you're just going to say, we're doing it, and we don't care about what you think. Is that what it boiled down to? It's just the incompetence of the city? That's all I want to ask. If you have evaluation that Noble is a good site, I'd like to see it, what the criterias are and how it is made, because within a couple of weeks, you can come up with so many sites as alternatives. I don't understand how decisions are made, and I'm disgusted with a decision that's being made. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
In the previous, thank you, City Council and members and staff, previously, when I was given an opportunity to speak, I made mention to the fact that if you search for the Robert W. Gross Ponds on Google, it is listed as a park in San Jose. So Google calls the area, the Robert W. Gross Ponds, a park in San Jose. Where did they get this information, you know, if it's not a park? If it's, they don't list it as unused land or a future tiny home site. It is a park. Google's never wrong. There's been mentioned that lawyers are going to look into the designation of what's obviously a park, and whether it's not, whether or not it is a park or not. You don't really need lawyers, that's more money spent. All you need are eyes, and a trip to the park. And when you get to the park, in order to walk in, in order to see where the future tiny home development is proposed, you have to walk, there are four ways in, and there are, and at each of the four entrances to the park are signs that say, welcome to your neighborhood park, which were, which was money spent by the taxpayers to put in, and they all say this neighborhood park is shared public space provided for your enjoyment and recreation. These signs were erected by the City of San Jose Department.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I've lived in and around Noble my whole life. I'm 63 years old, have a home there that we've lived in for 37 years, raised our daughter there. Spent many an afternoon and evening walking through that area, enjoying the calm peacefulness of it. I was just realizing, just a few minutes ago, that the, one of the beautiful things about that area is its lack of development. It's a natural space. I see kids there hunting lizards and snakes. I used to do that myself in that area when I was in high school there at Piedmont Hills High School. Went there with some of my classmates, junior, senior year, for insect collection, hunting insects. Something that you can't do in a regular park. There's a regular park not too far away, it's a lovely park, but it doesn't have the natural beauty that this park has. It would be a shame to spoil that for the neighborhood. Some kids don't get much chance to see open natural space, and that's what this is for them. So I'm hoping that you guys can find a way to designate this or see this as a park space, and so we can move on from the site. Thank you very much.
Okay, I've called all of the public speakers who had yellow cards. If you are in person and you wish to speak, you can still have the opportunity to fill out a yellow card and bring it down here, but I am right now going to move to Zoom. My first speaker is Isa.
I sent an email to all of you regarding No One Camp Zone.
no encampment zones not being mentioned in the neighborhood meeting for the EIH site in D-10. I can understand that maybe this is not mentioned because the city manager's office has not finalized how the policy would work. From the June twenty-first council meeting, I watched how the housing department demonstrated low interest in this policy. As a conservative community leader in South San Jose, this policy needs to be prioritized. The housing department has no problem pushing and talking about COPA for over a year now. And those details have not even been ironed out yet. But when it comes to items the housing department has no interest in, they drag their feet. On the Santa Clara website, Santa Clara County's website, it states the following. The overall number of homeless individuals counted this year increased by three percent in Santa Clara County and increased by eleven percent in the city of San Jose. The radius policy needs to be in place to deter encampment or San Jose will never be able to keep up with the homeless problem. We can't carry the burden for homeless for Santa Clara County. This report needs to be recognized and San Jose need to be, needs to address this threat, this trend. Today, I'm asking you to direct the city manager's office and any other departments or organizations to complete the radius policy as soon as possible. With this policy in place, the communities will be more welcoming to those housing projects. EIH and Bridge Housing Projects can become a win-win for all of us while deterring encampment. I support item three D of Mayor Sam LeCarter, Sergio Jimenez and Pam Foley's memo. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline.
Uh, hello, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Councilman Cohen and other council, uh, council members. I'm a resident of the Berriessa community. I'm here to speak about, uh, the tiny house project that's planned for the Noble site. As we know, many long-term homeless people have addictions, mental health issues, medical conditions that need ongoing care. So the point I would like to make is to provide them with the tiny homes for home they, they can stay is only the first step. Most critical is also be able to provide the support. Because of these, um, homeless people, most of them have medical condi- medical or mental conditions. I think the ultimate goal for this tiny home project is to reduce the number of homeless people in the city. And I completely understand. And that's the reason why, um, the government is giving the funding to build these tiny homes. But however, like I said, the support is, is just as important as building the tiny homes. As for the Noble site, um, as you know, this is around elementary school, middle school, and a park for everyone to go to. Lot of the other neighbors have already expressed concerns about the safety for the kids. What I would like to, to state here is, for this project, for the success of this project, in my opinion, um, you, we need to pick a site that is more convenient for these homeless, um, people to get the
Thank you. Paul Soto.
Uh, yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. It's really good to hear this council getting hard-checked. You guys are getting checked. You should be embarrassed by what is happening right now in this community. I want to thank every single District Four member that has come out today. I'm in full support of what it is that you're doing. I totally agree with what the woman said about, uh, whether it's being done publicly or secretly. She identified the government that we're dealing with now as totalitarian, you know, which, that's exactly what it is. It's a dictatorship. You guys tell us what you're gonna do and then you create a bunch of legal language using lawyers in order to do it. That's one of the, that's one of the caveats about having a mayor that's a lawyer, especially a Jesuit lawyer that was Jesuitly, uh, educated. You know, that, that's one of the, that's one of the issues here is that who determines whether or not that is a park? Is not the government, is not the, the lawyers inside of a room. It's the people. Case in point, Chicano Park. Chicano Park in Southern California. In the nineteen seventies, they, it was the people, the Chicanos that determined, said, you know what? This is our park. This is what we're gonna do. And they went and they made it a park because it's, the, the government wanted to create a CHP outpost there. And as a result of that, we have now Chicano Park that is known internationally around the world. Those murals are known, are world renowned. And so that is the power of the people, of what you can do when you are motivated and you are dedicated to ensuring that these parklands and these spaces are protected for, for, for your progeny. Because that's what we're talking about. We're talking about protecting these spaces so that your children and your children's children can grow up safely in a space that their parents provided.
Blair Beekman.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. This was a good learning experience for myself. Uh, you know, it's kind of an issue of, of, you know, good local government and their hutzpah, wanting to push forward ideas that community wants to question more. I think we have a wide array and choices of affordable housing ideas. We're trying to learn to develop at this time. And quick build is one of those choices. Good luck how government can learn to better explain to the community why exactly they think building on a public park is worth it and what, what are the advantages? To learn to more clearly explain that of government, that's important. And for community leaders to understand that and to consider the alternatives that are, are developing and available this time, good luck in all those efforts. I wanted to comment that mainly that, on the idea that, you know, with quick build, it was first introduced kind of last year with, with councilperson Mayhan and the mayor. I, I wanted ourselves to remember that, you know, there's a whole array of subsidy options from the state level that is learning to present itself year after year that will be available to us funding-wise for, for our housing issues in the future. And it's issues, it's subsidy that we've been hoping for, for decades, basically, and how to house people who can be housed, you know, for, for six months to eighteen months, two years. But then they fall out of the system. They can, they fall out of it because they can't keep up with the housing. We now have subsidy that can help them for two to five years, that can get them on their feet and get their jobs needed and, and create a really good future. We have to continue those good sort of good efforts and that organization. Good luck in the whole process of what we're doing with housing at this time.
Hey, Rihanna.
Hi, everyone. I live on the D-two, D-ten border, less than point two-five miles away from the proposed Great Oaks and eighty-five EIH site in D-10. I know you all have a hard job to do and we're dedicating to helping solve the issue together. I have heard city council, even in this meeting today, say that the EIH site should be spread around the city. And this is exactly what is not happening. I know council's concerned with district lines, but at the end of the day, we need to look past district lines and look at neighborhoods and communities, especially because so many lie along two district lines. In D-two, we have three existing EIH sites and now you're proposing to bring one. I know it's in D-10, but all within a three and a half mile radius. When you add that, we, no other district has even close to as many sites as we do. They either have one or zero. Equitable distribution doesn't just mean the number of sites. You also need to look at the number of people served at each sites. If the Great Oaks and eighty-five project continues, D-two and D-10, within a three and a half mile radius, will be housing six hundred people. Six hundred people, that's fifty-eight percent of the one thousand thirty-seven that you guys have tacked on until the end of this year. This means that fifty-eight percent of those, those beds will be in our area. If you take that even further, forty percent is in a one-mile radius, okay? So now you're saying that we have to carry on the burden of housing all of San Jose's homeless residents. We are happy to do our part. We've been doing our part. We were some of the original EIH sites, okay? But please, please, please make sure equitable distribution is done and that the rest of San Jose is also doing their part. Thank you.
Kirti. Kirti.
Hey, uh, thanks for the opportunity. My name is Kirti. So the city is obsessed with using this term of emergency in EIH to build on parkland by questioning the legality of this blurred definition of improvements to the park. If it's really an emergency, you should be considering every and any possibility of an alternate site, not just criteria you made up to save a few thousand dollars. You have a multimillion dollar project going on that you're suggesting here across many, many years. Also a word about Council Pereira's statement of what he calls a failure of constructing an EIH in D-nine. I don't belong in D-nine, but he said the, uh, in D-nine residents objected similarly. So as an immigrant, I find his suppression of democracy ridiculous and even autocratic. This is a government of the people and by the people and for the people. If the people have spoken vociferously and it succeeds, it's a success for the democracy. Please find alternate sites instead of building on our beloved parks and percolation ponds. You didn't know that it was a park because you did not do an outreach before voting on June twenty-first. If you did an outreach, we have spoken and told you it was a park, you didn't make improvements to the park despite it being a dedicated parkland in two thousand and two. That's on you as administrators. It's not on the residents. Please fix it. Thank you.
Margie Wheeler.
Hi, my name is Margie Wheeler. And I've lived here for thirty-five years, as my husband Lee said. Um, I've always heard that if it looks like a deck and quacks like a deck, it's probably a deck. If it looks like a park and acts like, like a park, is probably a park. So I want to move on to say, you guys have said that EIH is, you will vet the people and that they will be, uh, older people and people who are hopeful and want to move into society and regular housing. What happens when you run out of those people? What happens when you move drug addicts and people who have sex offender ratings? Will the city be able to bear a lawsuit if a child is raped or murdered? These tiny homes should not be anywhere near schools. I'm talking maybe, you know, four hundred feet. Are you guys gonna turn those tiny homes into little jails? Are they gonna be guarded? And everybody's going to be monitored? They're not gonna be able to leave unless they're monitored? That's not what it look, what it sounds like it's gonna be. But you are going to run out of people you, uh, who are going to be hopefuls. I have one final question that I would like answered. I have heard that you have to get a CEQA, a CEQA, before you can build. I want to make sure that that would hap-, if you guys decide to move forward with Noble, that you have to do that. And I will bet you a million dollars that you will not pass that because environmentally, that's a percolation pond area that percolates our precious water resources. Please save our land. Thank you.
Margie Matthews. Margie Matthews.
Thank you. This is Margie Matthews, like Canton Chu. I'm a former council member for this district. Uh, I've lived on Noble for forty-five years. I can tell you it's been a park for those forty-five years for the people who haven't been here that long. Um, I want to thank Councilmember Cohen for listening to his community and stepping forward. I want to thank the mayor and the council for trying to solve homelessness. I know it's a terrible and a tough problem. But I want to thank the community for, in spite of all the emotions, doing their due diligence and organizing and, and protecting this park and our, and our families in this neighborhood. The way this has been handled without notification or input has really been an insult to our community and it's an insult to every neighborhood across the city. It's really damaged the trust that elected officials need in order to govern on behalf of the voters. Parks are not the personal property of the mayor and the council. They belong to the people, particularly the residents in the neighborhood. They are sacred and they must be respected and cared for. To note that it's across the street from four schools, a library and a childcare center just goes without saying. It's unbelievable that this site was considered in the first place. Finally, if this park is not technically zoned as a park, not aligned with the way it's been used for the last forty-five years, then that's a loophole. And that's not a loophole that you can drive a project through and stay honest about it. So that needs to be fixed. Again, thank you for trying to solve homelessness. Thank you to the community. Please, this is not a suitable site for this project. Thank you.
Yi.
Yes, you hear me? Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. First, I, I want to say, uh, Noble site is not good place for, for tiny home. Because even LA Councilman, they, they kept the banned homeless encampment five hundred feet from the library and the school. They know, uh, this safety issue to the children. And the last week, there's another incident that's in the Monica Library. One person is to be killed by a homeless. So you want those, what is going to be? If you put a tiny home at the, uh, close to the school, huh? It's really a safety issue. Education is one important pillar, pillar of US system. It cannot be failed. So actually, we worried fear that the, the education system will cannot further damage our, our education system. This is the first sense. The second sense, Noble site. City paid many dollars to the water company to maintain the parks. You cannot say it's not a park, it's still a park. And three years ago, city spent, uh, I think at least a million dollars to pave the trail, connect a noble park and a number of park. So it's me something, huh? You cannot try, you cannot try to be blind, not see that. So this is, uh, the second point. The third point, before, actually don't have, homeless crisis, huh? Dunlap area. So the idea of site should be placed at Dunlap. No, the idea to spread the homeless to everywhere is not a good idea, it's bad idea. Thank you.
Jean Dresden. Jean?
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Jean Dresden. And I'd like to comment on, uh, Councilmember Cohen's recommendation two A and request that city staff move that to a green light item of the highest importance. I know that it stated that city attorney is looking at it, but it's far more complicated. There's a tripartite agreement between the county, the water district and the city about those properties as well as various funding sources that were used for the improvements. There's prior precedent on other parklands that were diverted to different city uses and it required the vote of the public. And that certainly we would be something that would allow litigious people, and I think we see a few in the audience here, to take to the court to ask for an injunction. And there should be an analysis of that risk prior to going forward. For this reason, it should be green-lighted. In addition, the city went full hog on trying to convert Los Lagos Golf Course to a combination of housing and soccer fields without doing all that deed research first and spent a lot of dollars and time on something it turned out couldn't be done because of deed and funding restrictions from outside grants. I urge you to do that work first, far before you do anything else, to make sure you actually can legally use this land based on the restrictions and agreements that have already been made. Thank you.
Kathy.
Hello. So a little background, I'm just born, I'm born and raised in this area my entire thirty-seven years. I walked from Penicencia Creek to Piedmont High School and I attended high school there. And I used this land specifically to explore[1794.94] And I used this land specifically to explore and study the insects for my biology class. And I want my three young children to experience the same natural land. Two of my children will be attending or have, or will be attending or attended Noble Elementary School right across the street, 100 feet away from the proposed site. So I want them to have a safe and a safe time attending there. So my main concern is, is the urgent decision to use this land for the Noble site for tiny homes based on budget within the fiscal year or the previous memorandum stated that the other viable sites that were provided to you guys for review would be too challenging to claim because of the lease agreements, costs, and time. So why are you rushing into this decision to build at the Noble site? You're putting cost savings before our children's safety. Also, is there a clear criteria as to what meets the requirements of building a tiny home site? If so, is there a criteria with limitation as to where and how far these tiny homes will be built near schools and communities? And Peralis and Davis, who are part of not supportive of halting the process, they either must not have children or love their children and have not lived near a tiny home to understand the inappropriate activity that goes on at these tiny home sites. Our children's safety is in your hands and will you be able to live with that? So this Noble site is not an ideal site. Rather than putting any effort and due diligence into finding another site near actual resources like transportation to help the homeless, you want to save money and resources. Don't choose.
Carol? Carol?
Hello. Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Well, I just learned about this news from the media. I told my kids and the first question my daughter asked me is, "Mom, can I still go biking in the park?" I paused and I couldn't answer this simple question right away. With this project, not only we lose the open space, damage the water resource in this area, but also we deeply concern the safety of our kids who go to school right across the street. My kids go there biking by themselves every day. Many kids from the Noble Elementary go to the Noble Library after school. As parents, we feel safe. We don't need to worry about it. And right now with this, after I hear this news, I'm worrying, I'm worrying about it every day. We no longer feel comfortable living here anymore for the kids' safety. I understand one councilman mentioned to speed things up, but do you really want to push it forward ignoring the safety of our kids and ignoring all the residents' opinion in this area? Are you going to accountable if anything happened to our kids? Let's count what happened in San Jose on July 14th. San Jose Police Department discovered a bunker in a homeless encampment with stealing goods and several firearms. I can imagine if one of the mental ill, the person come to Noble School and the library to start a tragedy like what happened in Texas, are you guys going to be responsible for that? You, our city council, working for the best interest of San Jose residents, should avoid any potential risk to.
Juan Estrada?
Dear Rules Committee, my name is Juan Estrada and I represent Green Foothills, which for 60 years has protected the open spaces, farmlands, and natural resources of Santa Clara and San Mateo Counties for the benefit of all. We acknowledge the urgent and pressing need for emergency interim housing. While any new location is likely to going to have some level of opposition, that reality should not preclude efforts to identify sites that would avoid significant environmental impacts and would better serve the individuals to be housed. I have two requests. The first request is for transparency. It would help the process and trust in the process to make detailed information about previously explored sites and new alternative sites public and easily accessible. For example, it is my understanding that multiple additional alternative sites have been suggested and may be evaluated in District 4. I submitted a request to staff on August 1st for information regarding those sites. I have not yet received information. Whether details are provided via webpage or on demand by staff, please direct staff to make that information easily accessible. The second request, we have concerns about the planned use of the Noble Avenue Reach 2 site, which is open space near water features that provides habitat for wildlife and enjoyment opportunities to the public. We strongly encourage city staff to vet all potential alternative sites. Green Foothill supports a diligent effort to find alternative locations in the district that do not have the same concerning environmental impacts and may be much more suitable for the currently unhoused. Thank you.
Dale?
Hi, good afternoon. Gail Osmer here. I just want to thank Councilmember Cohen and his staff for working so diligently and so hard on this and looking for many different places in his district. Believe it or not, I'm on the, your constituent side. I think this is a park. I'd like to find out how many are asked, how many city council people have been out there to see? It's a beautiful park. I went to the first meeting at the library and your staff did a wonderful job. They were very professional. A lot of the people were very angry and I can understand why, believe it or not. I mean, I'm all for my unhoused, as you all know, but this kind of is a waste of time. There's so many other bigger problems that we're foreseeing right now, especially what's going on at Columbus. Let's stop this and listen to the people that voted you in. Thank you very much.
Back to the committee?
Thank you, Tony. So I'm going to support the motion on the floor. I'm looking forward to getting additional information about whether it's going to be defined as a park or not and what other issues and concerns that we need to be aware of. So I'm going to support the motion and I don't see any hands raised from my colleagues.
Vice Mayor, Jim Mortfall? Yeah, I just ask for one clarification. On the, on Councilmember Cohen's memo on 2B, C, and 3, we did describe that in our early consideration form and kind of the extent of work there and the standard of, you know, what is, you know, what is a completed kind of work effort there. It's very extensive and given the timeframes we have, we think really that may need clarification and/or, as we've said, kind of managing the scope because it's quite extensive. So I just ask the committee to consider that as you evaluate your vote.
Yeah, and I'll just say, we want to help you on that. We don't want this to become overwhelming in terms of the amount of work and management. So as we evaluate sites, there will be some that quickly are not viable and some that require more work. And we will hope, we're hoping that our staff will be able to help you come to that decision quickly and narrow down the list so that, and then be able to say at that point that there's a logical reason why sites were eliminated from the list. And I think that's all we're asking for in the memo is just that it's clear to us why certain sites are being considered and why others are not so that we can communicate with the public about, you know, that the process has been thorough enough in evaluating those sites.
Thanks for that clarification, Councilmember. That's very helpful.
All right, Councilmember Peralis?
Yeah, thank you. And I looked over that as well, Jim, so appreciate your pause. I think we'll have an opportunity to speak about this. Council should, should it go to the full councils? It seems like it will. And I actually believe that there may be some pretty valid concerns with the location and I think we may find out from our parks department that that's the case or not. I would say that based on the history and what's been utilized and done here, it does walk like a park and sound like a park. So I think that's a major concern. I think another major concern is sort of the context of this entire conversation as well. You wouldn't think that we were discussing housing human beings if you listened to the majority of the comments, if you were a layperson and just tuning in for your first time. And that's disheartening. It's unfortunate that there is this much animosity and fear and misunderstanding on what it is that we are actually doing, what it means to actually create housing, emergency interim housing for people that are struggling from homeless. It's something that any one of us are, you know, could be susceptible of. And yet, I think the lack of empathy from the community that I've heard is, it is unfortunate. It's nothing new. We hear this almost time and again on each location that we propose, whether it's for emergency interim housing, permanent supportive housing. And I know this because, and I think there were some misunderstandings as well and comments that were stated. There actually are two of these sites in District 3 today. District 3 has housed the very, very first one. I personally have two kids and my nearly four-year-old asks me about the encampment that has existed for years, just half a block from our house, why these people are living in the street. And the reality is, is that we continue to allow people to not only live in our streets, but also to live in our parks, parks that you don't even have to question whether they're a park or not. The Guadalupe River Park, Columbus Park, St. James Park. But these are human beings that today we are allowing to live out in our parks and our streets, under our bridges and our waterways, our creeks, rivers, you name it. And that's why this is an emergency. That's why we do need to actually take swift action. And again, I think there may be some valid concerns with this location. But at the same time, the length of time that it has taken us to actually take action on this, because I was there when we first had these discussions over six years ago now and as a council, obviously not this.
I guess we lost him.
His mic is back. Peralis, your mic did drop. We're showing that it's back, but we're not hearing you.
Yeah, sorry. It looks like my service cut out. I apologize.
We can hear you now.
Okay.
You had a.
I don't know where I dropped off on my.
I'm sorry, Raul. Can you repeat what you just said?
Yeah, sorry. It looks like I am having some connectivity issues here.
Okay, you want to try to finish your thought or should we move on? I guess we'll move on. All right, I don't see any other hands raised. So I'm going to call for the vote. Tony?
Arenas? Cohen?
Hi.
Davis?
Yes.
Peralis? Jones?
Hi.
And Peralis, if you want to text me your vote, I'll announce it out loud.
All right, so we'll move on on to open forum.
Okay, I want to remind people that open forum is for items not on the agenda. This is not the time to talk about the item we just voted on. So if you want to talk about that topic again, I will mute you. So again, new topics not on the agenda. Vivian?
So I want to comment to what District 3 Councilmember Raul just mentioned. Is that okay?
No, this is not the time to talk about what.
Please, please leave the council chambers quietly.
Okay, again, I'm going to say we're not going to talk about the last item. So if you start to talk about the last item, we will just immediately mute you. Gail Osmer?
Hi. Well, as of Monday, they started posting at Columbus Park. And we've been sitting here for hours discussing an item that I just feel we have a lot more items to discuss. And Councilmember Peralis, you've known about this for years. Nobody has been stepping up to help these folks. We have about 60 or 70 RVs. Where are they going to go? The city is paying a lot of money for home firsts to help and home firsts to try to get folks into housing. They have failed. They haven't failed 100%, but believe me, they have failed. And it's a travesty to see what's going on out there when you have a pregnant woman about to have a baby, home firsts failed. You have a vet with one leg in a wheelchair. Home first failed him. They have failed many people. And nobody is stepping up to help the community out there. Where are they going to go? Are the RVs going to go in your district, in your neighborhoods? Councilmember Davis, thank you for having your staff come out, but you need to step up too, please. Nobody is taking this seriously. Nobody is doing anything. Nobody's going out and talking to the folks that are traumatized by where they're going to go. They're sitting behind their desk and not doing a thing. So September 1st, H is going to break out and it's going to be hard for a whole month. Thank you.
Claire Beakman?
Hi, Claire Beakman. Thanks for the meeting today. To comment a bit on Paul Soto's words a little earlier, I hope that, you know, efficiency for the government meeting process is important, but just as important is the love that there is for the public process. And that love just needs to emanate and needs to constantly be present in allowing public comment time and space. It was proven today how important it is just to have the public comment. And to really advocate for that, it just has to be a part of how we think and work and act. It isn't just about government efficiency. Hopefully, we can enter a new phase to consider that in the next few years here in San Jose. I'm also hopeful, looking at your agenda items, that we can be talking about the future of, I tried to say earlier, the military industrial complex. I think we can honestly ask those questions. We're in a bit of a bad space right now, as always, with issues like going on in Ukraine that I really hope all sides want to address. We can talk about serious peace plans in this month of August that I hope the US wants to do. And it's with that, I think we are on course that we have a future plan to really limit the future of the military industrial complex in this country. It may sound funny and laughable to you, but it's really honest, important work that is moving forward. And we are addressing it. And it's when you invite the whole community to that process, that's how we address issues. And we want to become involved in that and we just naturally start building our better ideas of peace and sustainability out of that. And that means less crime. So good luck how we can do those things in these coming months and welcome back to the fall of 2021, or 22. Thank you.
Caller 4963?
Yeah, hi, Martha O'Connell. One of the hallmarks of open and transparent government is the ability of a citizen to submit a Public Records Act request and have that acted on in a timely manner. I have done many of them for over 20 years and basically never had a problem until recently. I submitted such a request on the 15th of June. I haven't received anything. I called Sandra and Gloria in the city manager's office on Friday, 7/29, have no response from them. I called again on Monday, August 1st. Both ladies, no response. I called my assembly person's office. They immediately responded and placed a call to the office of the city clerk and got back to me yesterday and said that I would be receiving materials today. Granted, it is 4:11 in the afternoon and the gentleman handling the request still has time, but I don't know what's going on in the office of the city manager. I don't know if you have a new person who is untrained, but something needs to be done. I sent him an email asking for his phone number so I could at least talk to him and he's not giving me that. So folks, open and transparent government, accountable government means that you respond to PRAs in a timely manner. I have never turned down a request for more time in the history of asking for documentation. They haven't even asked for more time. They've just blatantly ignored the. They haven't even asked for more time. They've just blatantly ignored the request. Thank you.
Paul Soto?
Yes, Paul Soto from the horse show. I would ask anybody on this call to make a public records request for Councilwoman Esparza, Councilwoman Carrascos and Prowlis. Their emails of September 30th at 3:00 AM. Make a public records request for that particular email. Because on that particular email was when they were warned 30 days before the murders happened at Rebecca Armandadis's house. Okay, I've been arrested and you guys sent, you guys sent a boy to do a man's job. You sent Harvey G to go in there and embarrass me and shame me with that document that this city produced, filing a restraining order on me, okay, and making me go inside that room and answer to it. Judge Overton was disgusted by what Harvey G was talking. She had to continually check him on the ethics of the court. Constantly check him. And she stated, and I quote, "There has been not one shred of evidence that has been produced today that would persuade me to believe that Mr. Soto is dangerous or a threat to the city council," end quote. That's Judge Overton. And what she did is she requested that a stenographer show up to court on August 22nd to ensure that there is a public record of it. Why? Because I'm taking Prowlis and Peter Allen to trial for what you guys did to me. You arrested me, Prowlis sent a helicopter after me, had me arrested, and falsely accused of violating a protective order. A protective order where Peter Allen's name nor his address are on any protective order that was ever produced by the city that I should have known applied to him. The city's got a lot to answer to. On August 22nd at 9:00 AM, Department 11?
Back to the committee.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.